Today is the 23rd day of May 2022. This meeting will now come to order. Please join us for the pledge of allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Lemon, will you give us a roll call vote please?
Director Bentley?
Present.
Director Mash?
Present.
Director Matthews?
Present.
Director Mueller?
Present.
Director Norwood?
Present.
Director Pappas?
Present.
Director Sullivan?
Present.
All board members, present.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Again, if you're joining us here in person or if you're joining us online, welcome. We're excited that you are here. Our students are no longer here. They are enjoying their first week at home, most of them. I think we still have some of our charter schools still have students in the building. They're finishing up, but the majority of our students are still are at home enjoying a well-deserved break. As, well, I do believe our teachers are still in the buildings, but they will be getting their break shortly. And we've been, as a board, at a lot of graduations over the last few days. We have heard pomp and circumstance more than anyone really should hear pomp and circumstance. And we just want to say again, congratulations to our graduates. I want to express how proud we are of our graduates and proud of our graduation rate and want to commend all of our teachers and all of our administrators and all of those people who have worked to improve that graduation rate. If you haven't gotten this yet, you will be getting this. It's a report to the community that should be showing up in your mailbox any day now. And if you look in there, you'll see that our graduation rate has risen to 84.1%. And that is now almost, it's two full, almost three full percentage points higher than the state average. There are tons of things though that you can read in this report. You can see the number of laptops that we've bought with the MLO, which is 16,774. The number of new buses we bought with MLO money, 47. You can see what's happening with our bond issue at the different schools and which one of those schools are open and which will be opening. And when they're opening, we're going to get a report on that tonight. There's some great stories about some of our students and even a really wonderful story about how a student saved his teacher's life. And so there's some great things in their report. So I know it's a big booklet, but if you get that in your mailbox, do take a look at it. If you want to know what's happening in this district. That's all I have for tonight. We need to approve an agenda. That's an action item that we'll need a motion.
I move that the Board of Education agree Lee Evans School District 6 approves the agenda as presented.
Second.
Any discussion on the agenda? During none, Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote please?
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Mueller?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Pappas?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. We're now to our public participation portion of our meeting. And the Board welcomes the comments of our community members and has dedicated this portion of the agenda to provide an opportunity for the community to present brief comments or pose questions to the Board. Written testimony or speaker handouts must be submitted to our Board Secretary, Ms. Lemon, and not to individual Board members. The Board does not typically engage in discussion or provide immediate response to the input, but will ask district staff to respond as appropriate. The Board is committed to providing a safe environment where all members of our school community are treated with dignity and respect and expects our speakers to exercise their speech rights responsibly. Defamatory or abusive remarks are always out of order. Speakers will be heard in the order in which they signed up to speak and comments are limited to three minutes. If you would like to reach out to us, you're always free to email us. Our first speaker tonight will be Ms. Delia Hayfley. Thank you for being here tonight, Ms. Hayfley.
Yes, thank you. First of all, I'm Delia Hayfley, President of the Success Foundation, and this is Kelly Zielman. She is the Vice President and she will be taking over the first of January. So I wanted to put a face with the name here. So I'm, yes, we're here on behalf of the Success Foundation and we are the foundation for District 6. And our mission is to build a strong, healthy community and bring resources to our PK students in District 6. We just finished with our Smart Lab project. We raised a little over $4 million. We will have 22 Smart Labs in our elementary, middle school, and K-8 schools by 2024. And we are very grateful for our donors, our grant funders who pledged and donated that money. So the project is a foundation for our students to build their STEM understanding, career exploration, and a continuum between elementary, middle school, and high school. So with that being said, our next project that we are so looking forward to funding is the new CTE Center or HELP Fund. Our goal is to raise $1.5 million for those programs, which will include construction, cosmetology, welding, early childhood education, informational technology with an emphasis on cybersecurity. We are excited about this. We think our students will benefit from that project, the programs that are being offered. They'll be able to enter workforce after graduation if they wanted to or higher education. The impact impacts all of our high school kids. They'll be able to be at their home high school and then at the Career Center if they choose to do that. They'll be able to get an endorsement, industrial certifications, and on-the-job training. We would just like to take this time to thank our community for their continued support with the projects that we come forward with, with the Success Foundation. We love our partnership with you all and hope it continues to grow. If I could get Delia to stay on one more year, I would. Thank you for the time today, Ms. Lemon, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Hayfley. Our next speaker tonight is Michelle Selgren. Is Ms. Selgren here?
Hi.
Welcome, Ms. Selgren.
How are you guys today?
You'll have three minutes.
Okay, well, I'm here to talk about the computers. I love that you guys provide computers to our kids, but I just wanted to provide sort of a reflection as a parent. I don't like having them at my house during the summer. I know that you guys have said that we can turn them in, but when my kids go to turn in the computers at the end of the school, because I value them having some social skill and providing some feedback into the family and getting involved, and it sort of distracts. I don't know if the school district can offer parents like the ability to control what times of the day kids can get on these, because what happens to me during the school year, and I'm pretty sure other parents, is kids on these all night long, all day long. They're not sleeping, we're not sleeping. It's not really that good. It's a great resource, I enjoy that. That has changed in school District 6, that every kid has a computer to access, that every kid can learn how to get on a computer, move a computer. It's definitely needed. I see it in my work, working for employment services, that people need more computer skills. But I just don't, I'm just having a hard time with it coming home during the summer, because I don't really feel there's a need for students to have it during the summer. They're not learning anything academically, they're not getting any information from it. They're not all, you know, I'm sure my kids aren't any different than any other kids in the school district, watching YouTube videos, looking up things they might not need to. I appreciate some of the filters you guys have on here, but not all of your filters are catching all this stuff. And I'm finding it difficult as a parent of four kids in the school district to monitor and keep my kids off all this stuff and to control the hours of the day that they're on it, to get some sleep. I don't know if that's something the school district and the technology group that you guys have that is really strong and wonderful can look into is providing some of that training to some of us parents who aren't as technologically advantaged to set up controls to whether or not kids can get on it at 11 o'clock, 10 o'clock, what kinds of things they're watching, looking, and seeing at. I know there's certain things that aren't able to, but I know that my kids can access this in computer at 11 o'clock at night. And it's really hard to be awake all night long or to buy a box to lock it up in. Or, you know, there's so many things that us parents have to do that it just becomes increasingly more difficult having this computer at my house all year, the whole time. The financial responsibility, the parental responsibility, the technology responsibility, the responsibility for my kids not to get bullied on this. Just my end comment is I want to turn this computer in, because my son was not able to turn it in at Prairie Heights. And it's at my house and I don't want it there, and I don't have time to go during school hours to turn it in.
Thank you, Ms. Selgren.
So who could I give this to?
Mr. Asmus will work with you. He's here in the back room, he'll work with you.
Thank you so much, you guys.
Thank you, Ms. Selgren. Our next speaker tonight is Ms. Sonia Miller. Welcome, Ms. Miller.
Hello, Board. Okay, I had asked where I could find the, I had asked Ms. Lemon where I could find the works, the recorded work session meetings. Ms. Lemon, you did send me a link and email and I appreciate that, but where can I find that if I'm just a member of the public wanting to find it on the website? Is that available on the website or do I have to ask you for a link?
Microphones are now mounted in the room upstairs where we're holding the work sessions. That's appreciated, however, the first sentence that each of you say is not on the mic, because the mic is not turned on, it's not ready, whatever. We also don't know who's speaking if we're not in person to see who's speaking, because nobody states their name before they speak. And the Chair is not addressing the members of the Board as the meeting goes on, as he should if something is not video recorded, Pastor Matthews. Also, you guys aren't facing the public. So in that work session meeting up there, you work for the public, you serve the public, you're elected by the public, you should face the public when you're talking. And you are all, your backs, all of your backs are facing us in the work session meetings. Why are not, why are the work session meetings held up there anyways? Why aren't they in this boardroom? We have name tags, we have all the equipment to watch, to see, to listen, we know who's speaking, it just makes the most sense. So what is it that we're trying to hide, that we have to continue to have these meetings upstairs? Pastor, do you mind looking at me when I speak to you? And the board welcomes the comments of our community members and has dedicated this portion of the agenda to provide an opportunity for the community to present brief comments or pose questions to the board. Written testimony or speaker handouts must be submitted to our board secretary, Ms. Lemon, and not to individual board members. The board does not typically engage in discussion or provide immediate response to the input, but will ask district staff to respond as appropriate. The board is committed to providing a safe environment where all members of our school community are treated with dignity and respect and expects our speakers to exercise their speech rights responsibly. Defamatory or abusive remarks are always out of order. Speakers will be heard in the order in which they signed up to speak, and comments are limited to three minutes. If you would like to reach out to us, you're always free to email us. Our first speaker tonight will be Ms. Delia Hayfley. Thank you for being here tonight, Ms. Hayfley.
Yes, thank you. First of all, I'm Delia Hayfley, president of the Success Foundation, and this is Kelly Zielman. She is the vice president, and she will be taking over the first of January, so I wanted to put a face with the name here. So I'm, yes, we're here on behalf of the Success Foundation, and we are the foundation for District Six, and our mission is to build a strong, healthy community and bring resources to our PK students in District Six. We just finished with our Smart Lab project. We raised a little over $4 million. We will have 22 Smart Labs in our elementary, middle school, and K-8 schools by 2024. And we are very grateful for our donors, our grant funders, who pledged and donated that money. So the project is a foundation for our students to build their STEM understanding, career exploration, and a continuum between elementary, middle school, and high school. So with that being said, our next project that we are so looking forward to funding is the new CTE Center or Help Fund. Our goal is to raise $1.5 million for those programs, which will include construction, cosmetology, welding, early childhood education, informational technology with an emphasis on cybersecurity. We are excited about this. We think our students will benefit from that project, the programs that are being offered. They'll be able to enter workforce after graduation if they wanted to or higher education. The impact impacts all of our high school kids. They'll be able to be at their home high school and then at the Career Center if they choose to do that. They'll be able to get an endorsement, industrial certifications, and on-the-job training. We would just like to take this time to thank our community for their continued support with the projects that we come forward with, with the Success Foundation. We love our partnership with you all and hope it continues to grow. If I could get Delia to stay on one more year, I would. Thank you for the time today evening, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Hayfley. Our next speaker tonight is Michelle Selgren. Is Ms. Selgren here?
Hi.
Welcome, Ms. Selgren.
How are you guys today?
You'll have three minutes.
Okay. Well, I'm here to talk about the computers. I love that you guys provide computers to our kids, but I just wanted to provide sort of a reflection as a parent. I don't like having them at my house during the summer. I know that you guys have said that we can turn them in, but when my kids go to turn in the computers at the end of the school, because I value them having some social skill and providing some feedback into the family and getting involved, and it sort of distracts. I don't know if the school district can offer parents like the ability to control what times of the day kids can get on these, because what happens to me during the school year, and I'm pretty sure other parents, is kids on these all night long, all day long. They're not sleeping, we're not sleeping. It's not really that good. It's a great resource. I enjoy that. That has changed in school District Six, that every kid has a computer to access, that every kid can learn how to get on a computer, move a computer. It's definitely needed. I see it in my work, working for employment services, that people need more computer skills. But I just don't, I'm just having a hard time with it coming home during the summer, because I don't really feel there's a need for students to have it during the summer. They're not learning anything academically, they're not getting any information from it, they're not all, you know, I'm sure my kids aren't any different than any other kids in the school district, watching YouTube videos, looking up things they might not need to. I appreciate some of the filters you guys have on here, but not all of your filters are catching all this stuff, and I'm finding it difficult as a parent of four kids in the school district to monitor and keep my kids off all this stuff and to control the hours of the day that they're on it, to get some sleep. I don't know if that's something the school district and the technology group that you guys have that is really strong and wonderful can look into, is providing some of that training to some of us parents who aren't as technologically advantaged, to set up controls to whether or not kids can get on it at 11 o'clock, 10 o'clock, what kinds of things they're watching, looking, and seeing at. I know there's certain things that aren't able to, but I know that my kids can access this and computer at 11 o'clock at night. And it's really hard to be awake all night long or to buy a box to lock it up in, or, you know, there's so many things that us parents have to do that it just becomes increasingly more difficult having this computer at my house all year, the whole time. The financial responsibility, the parental responsibility, the technology responsibility, the responsibility for my kids not to get bullied on this. Just my end comment is I want to turn this computer in because my son was not able to turn it in at Prairie Heights, and it's at my house and I don't want it there, and I don't have time to go during school hours to turn it in.
Thank you, Ms. Selgren.
So who could I give this to?
Mr. Asmus will work with you. He's here in the back room, he'll work with you.
Thank you so much, you guys.
Thank you, Ms. Selgren. Our next speaker tonight is Ms. Sonia Miller. Welcome, Ms. Miller.
Hello, Board. Ah, okay, I had asked where I could find the, I had asked Ms. Lemon, where I could find the works, the recorded work session meetings. Ms. Lemon, you did send me a link and email, and I appreciate that, but where can I find that if I'm just a member of the public wanting to find it on the website? Is that available on the website, or do I have to ask you for a link? Microphones are now mounted in the room upstairs where we're holding the work sessions. That's appreciated. However, the first sentence that each of you say is not on the mic, because the mic is not turned on, it's not ready, whatever. We also don't know who's speaking if we're not in person to see who's speaking, because nobody states their name before they speak, and the chair is not addressing the members of the board as the meeting goes on, as he should if something is not video recorded. Pastor Matthews. Also, you guys aren't facing the public. So in that work session meeting up there, you work for the public, you serve the public, you're elected by the public, you should face the public when you're talking, and you are all, your backs, all of your backs are facing us in the work session meetings. Why are not, why are the work session meetings held up there anyways? Why aren't they in this boardroom? We have name tags, we have all the equipment to watch, to see, to listen, we know who's speaking, it just makes the most sense. So what is it that we're trying to hide, that we have to continue to have these meetings upstairs? In a, Pastor, do you mind looking at me when I speak to you, when we're up there? Why are we still up there? Pastor, you said that there was a void of parents not being in schools. This isn't a void. These kids belong to the parents, they don't belong to any of you, and you guys go around behaving like they do, they don't. You can't lock parents out, you have to start letting parents in. You should have never stopped, I don't care COVID or otherwise. These kids are not yours. 666 is still in our district logo, Pastor Michael Matthews. I would like you to address that. You failed to, at any public comment, address it after we've spoke about it or asked about it. Please do something about the 666 symbolism in our district logo. I think I'll just go on to this Pilch email that I got. I had sent an email to the board and Ms. Pilch titled genital ulcers. This is because I sent you a study from NIH.gov about kids as young as 12, five actually, getting genital ulcers from this Pfizer vaccine. This is obviously not anything sexual, as this is happening in five-year-olds. So I sent this study, and I said, this is the vaccine that District Six has been pushing on our community children, our community's children since the FDA authorized this giant human experiment, to which Pilch replied, hello, Sonia, I want to be clear that the school district is not pushing this vaccine, da, da, da. We stop, please stop accusing us of promoting or even possibly vaccinating students, this is wrong. I want to know, Ms. Pilch, if you're not promoting this vaccine, why is it that you've had the bus to our high schools to vaccinate our kids? Why is it that you've sent out emails to our parents and to our students to get this vaccine? Why is it that on the Facebook page for District Six, you have shared a post, whoever runs this page, has shared a post from Sunrise Community Clinic, which Ms. Mash works at, to share this vaccine? That is promotion of this vaccine. Quit playing around. I don't know why you're laughing.
Thank you. That is all of our public comment. We are now to our work session report. Ms. Lemon.
The Board of Education opened the work session with comments and reports from each board member and reviewed upcoming events. Board members and Superintendent Pilch reviewed and reflected upon the recent community listening sessions. The work session concluded with a debrief of the work session.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. We're now to our superintendent's report. So Dr. Pilch, I'll hand it to you.
Thank you, President Matthews, members of the board. I want to thank all of you for your work last week. You all participated in graduation ceremonies. Mrs. Pappas, you get the award for most graduations attended. I think that by the time we finish the graduation season, you will have been able to have been at all but one of our graduations. So thank you to all of you for your dedication. It truly was a beautiful graduation season and a wonderful end to the school year with lots of celebrations and programs and recognitions for our students and our staff. I wanted to share that this week we have what we call our Secondary Leadership Academy taking place, or Secondary Leadership Institute, but we have teams of teachers and administrators from all of our secondary schools, our middle schools, K-8s and high schools, all working this week and working around a deeper understanding around beliefs with grading practices and really looking at our grading practices district-wide, working with a gentleman named Rick warmly. Deeply grateful to those teachers and administrators who just finished school last week, and now those teachers have come back this week to work and to do this really important work in preparation for their colleagues coming back in the fall, where they will lead this work with their colleagues. I also want to recognize some folks who are here in the audience tonight, who are some of our latest recommendations for hire for building administrators. I'll start at the back of the room, way back there, I see Mrs. Karen Poland. Karen, stand up and let us see you. Stephanie, her principal is there with her. So Karen is our recommendation for the assistant principal position at Prairie Heights Middle School. She began her educational career in 2009 and taught science at Charles City Public Schools in Charles City, Virginia, for a total of three years. And then she accepted a position as a head science teacher at Jefferson City Public Schools in Jefferson, Missouri, Jefferson City, Missouri, where she served for four years. And then most recently, she has been at Early College Academy. Her combined years of experience were 13 years. And Karen, you know, I spent some time in the Midwest, in the Kansas City area, and it's no wonder you've chosen to do this part of your career here in Colorado instead of remaining in Missouri. But she did obtain her Bachelor's of Science degree from James Madison University, and then continued her earning her Master of Science degree in Biology from Virginia Commonwealth University, and most recently completed her Educational Specialist Degree in Ed Leadership here at the University of Colorado. So Karen, welcome to our district leadership team. Pending your approval tonight, I want to welcome you to District Six Administration and to Prairie Heights Middle School as the new Assistant Principal. We also have with us Mr. Brad Farbo, who is the recommendation for the Assistant Principal at Scott Elementary School. His new, or his principal, he'll be the new Assistant Principal there, Ryan McDougall is out ill tonight. So Brad, just feel the love around you, and you can adopt any of these other administrators as your adopted principal for tonight, as we welcome you. But Mr. Farbo began his educational career in our neighboring District of St. Vrain as an elementary PE teacher, and taught there for two years, and then he came to District Six in 2013, where I really think he's found his home. He has been the PE teacher there at Scott Elementary School, and he's taught there for eight years. He was, this past year, he was a teacher on special assignment as a behavior specialist, and he also ran the summer school program there as the site facilitator, and we're just really excited to have him come into this role. He has 11 years of experience in education. He earned his Bachelor's Degree of Science in Exercise Science from CSU-Pueblo in 2011, and then he continued his learning by earning a Master's of Arts in Educational Leadership from the University of Northern Colorado, which he completed in 2019. Welcome, Brad. Pending board approval tonight, I welcome you to the district leadership team. And then finally, last but not least, I always love it when I get to steal a good administrator from one of my neighboring colleagues. My good friend, Laura Anna's former superintendent gave her, just sang her praises when we spoke last week. But Laura, if you'll stand up, Laura Anna is our recommendation for the Assistant Principal at Winograd K-8, and her principal, her principal sitting there next to her, Lindsay Gentle, who you all pointed here just a couple of months ago as the principal at Winograd. Laura began her career as a school counselor in the St. Vrain Valley School District and served in that role for four years, and then in 2014, she became a dean of students there and transitioned to the role of Assistant Principal in 2019. Mrs. Anna brings 12 years of combined educational experience. We're so excited to have someone come into the team with that counseling background, as well as a lot of experience as an Assistant Principal in the St. Vrain Valley School District. Ms. Anna obtained her Bachelor of Science in Journalism from the University of Northern Colorado, and then she continued her Master's in Education Counseling Degree from the University of Phoenix and her Educational Licenseur from the University of Phoenix. Laura, congratulations and welcome to the District Six District Leadership Team. You know, I'm so excited to introduce these three folks to you tonight, and you know, this is something we started here earlier in the spring when one of you said to me, you know, I'd like to meet the new administrators. I think one of our, I think Mr. Bentley was you, as a new board member, you were like, I'd like to meet them. And so we started inviting our new administrators to the board meeting, so you would have a chance to lay eyes on them and really to give us a chance to celebrate them. I'm just so excited about the candidate pool we've had this year and the tremendous talent we have coming into our school districts and administrations. So welcome to all of you, and thanks for being here tonight to be introduced. And then finally, I will just say, Ms. Miller asked the question about the work session recordings. They can be found on our website under the Board of Education page, they're there, where folks can access them, and we'll continue to work in our work session. Thank you, President Matthews, and members of the board.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Next item on our agenda is to approve a consent agenda. And again, these are the items that we have all agreed that don't need comment or discussion from us, and we'll need a motion to approve it.
I move that the Board of Education agree Lee Evans School District Six approves items as presented on the consent agenda and authorizes the officers to sign any and all contracts.
Second.
Thank you both. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Ms. Mash?
So I do have a comment, and that is just because I want to call something out that's really exciting. Every time in our consent agenda, we get to approve the personnel, like the folks that were introduced today. But on this meeting's personnel list are 60 student intern positions, and that is just really exciting that we get to offer 60 of our students the opportunity to be working in an area that they're interested in studying, they get paid, many of them are working here in our district with our maintenance team, our IT department, whatever different area that they might be interested in. And once again, we want to thank our voters for passing our Mill levy override, because those internships are able to be paid with those funds. So just a shout out.
Thank you, Ms. Mash. Any other comments on consent agenda? Hearing none, Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Mueller?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Pappas?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next on our agenda is a contract for ABC Asphalt Contract Approval. This is an action item that will need a motion.
I move to approve the contract with ABC Asphalt Incorporated as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Before we open this up, board members, for comment and discussion, Dr. Pilch, is there anything you would like to say about this particular?
Thank you, President Matthews, yes. And I appreciate, there were some questions that came to me today about this, and so we just pulled it from consent, so we would have an opportunity to share with the whole board. This contract includes asphalt work, as you see, at several sites, but I think the one in question, or the one we're most curious about, is the asphalt work at Gloria Christie Lutheran Church. So that church is adjacent to Scott Elementary School, where Brad will be the new AP, and 24 years ago, district leadership and the leadership of the church entered into a lease agreement where we are able to use that church parking lot during the week, and they're able to use the school parking lot on Sunday if they should need it for church services. And as a part of that contract, the agreement was that the district would maintain the parking lot for the Gloria Christie Lutheran Church there next to Scott. And so you see some work that we will be doing there, and as well as asphalt work at several other sites. It is a smaller portion of the work that was bid out, but it's an agreement we have, and the contract actually comes up for renewal in 2023, so we'll be looking at the contract at that time.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Any other comments or questions from board members? Mr. Bentley?
Yeah, so I just pulled the contract as earlier today, as it got pulled out, but I just wanted to comment, and by no means is this directed at anybody, especially ABC Asphalt, but in my experience, you know, the bidding process, just to have one outstanding bid that low, you know, usually raises a red flag. So I would maybe like to have a conversation eventually of how, you know, I'm sure to even be here and be bidding, they've been well-vetted, but, you know, just in my industry, you know, one that's 30% lower than the rest is usually a red flag. So I'm sure you did, but I would maybe like just a little background on the, you know, it doesn't have to be tonight, but down the road, a conversation that way.
Yeah, we absolutely can provide some additional information on our RFP and bidding process to you all, certainly.
Thank you, Mr. Bentley.
And I think, Ken, you're very confident about this bid from ABC Asphalt, correct? And they're a company we've worked with before. Yeah.
Yeah, it wasn't directed at anybody, especially not ABC.
It's a great question, though.
Any other questions? I'm not seeing any. I would just like to say thank you to, I can't remember the name of the church, so Gloria...
Gloria Christie Lutheran.
Gloria Christie Lutheran for allowing us the use of that parking lot for so many years, 24 years, I think you said. So we certainly appreciate that contribution. And Ms. Lemon, I think we're ready for a vote.
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Mueller?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Pappas?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Our next item of business is City of Evans real estate, and this is an action item that will need a motion.
I move to approve the IGA concerning land conveyance as presented.
Second.
Thank you all. Again, before we open this up to board members to discuss, Dr. Pilch, would you like to lead us off?
Thank you, President Matthews, and let me first introduce to you Mr. Randy Reddy, the Assistant City Manager from Evans. He's here tonight. He has been critical in working with Mr. Hinson in ensuring that this could come to fruition. And as you all are aware, as we discussed previously, this is an intergovernmental agreement that allows a land shift between the City of Evans and the Greeley Evans School District, and it will actually allow us to have land directly adjacent to Prairie Heights Middle School. And there's also a piece in this agreement where the school district would work to build a new high school within the City of Evans within the next 15 years. Not, maybe on that land, maybe not, but we would work to build a school there.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Are there any questions or comments from board members? Ms. Mash?
I just would like to thank the City of Evans for working closely with the school district. I just appreciate the partnership, the willingness. I want to say it was even your idea or your suggestion, but in any case, thank you for, yeah, for this deal, and we're excited to continue in building new schools in Evans as well.
Thank you, Ms. Mash. Mr. Bentley?
Just clarification, did we get it changed to it has to be on that site? I didn't read through the actual contract. It'll...
Yeah, so I think the language is not specific around that. Ken, do you want to respond to that?
So what the language is, is it's a 15-year contract, so we would exchange the land right now, and then within 15 years, if we built a high school on that site, then the City of Evans would donate their property to District Six to make that happen. If in 15 years we're not underway, you know, with the high school, then it can be renegotiated, or that land on the outside, which is the smaller piece of the swap, would revert back to the City of Evans for use. But we would maintain our boundary, 23 acres adjacent to Prairie Heights in exchange for the 15 acres.
Okay, so it's, the high school portion is specific to that site?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I think, I think we went through it in our executive session, but it's a win-win for the district, and I think, I keep going back to the Chamber of Commerce deal that we went to the other day about them saying that Weld County is going to double in population by 2045, so this seems like a smart move in all facets, so.
It's definitely a win-win for us.
Thank you, Mr. Hinson. Thank you. Mr. Bentley, any other questions or comments from our board members? Again, we did go through this thoroughly in our executive session a couple of weeks ago, and so, Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Mueller?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Pappas?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next item in business is public comment regarding Illumination Education, and I don't know that we have anyone signed up to speak to this particular item. Ms. Lemon is shaking her head, so we'll move right on to our discussion of Illumination Education. And so, Dr. Pilch, I'll give it to you to explain what this is, why it's coming before us tonight.
Thank you, President Matthews. So Illuminate Education is a vendor who we contract with for services for our student management of data. We use one of their tools to manage our testing information on students, our demographic information on students. Unfortunately, Illuminate had a data breach in their system earlier in the year, and as a result of that data breach, student names, birth dates, gender, and their homeroom teacher were found to have been possibly leaked in that data breach. The breach is the full responsibility of Illuminate Education, and Illuminate has taken responsibility for that, and they've taken many steps to ensure that something like this doesn't happen again. They have also, we have sent a communication to families about the data breach, and then Illuminate Ed has also sent a communication to families. In their communication, they have identified for parents... In their communication, they have identified for parents how parents can sign up should they wish to have their credit monitored for the, I think it's the next year and a half or so, as a result of this data breach. So I, we spent extensive time with our legal counsel, with you all, discussing this and the implications of this. And now I want to give the board an opportunity to discuss it further in public. And then the next item will be for the board to consider continuing the contract with Illuminate Ed or discontinuing or or not renewing that contract with Illuminate Ed for the next school year. I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Ms. Pappas?
Yes, I am just curious, after you sent the communication to parents, have you had a lot of feedback, response, questions?
We did have, we did have a few calls come in with questions, but it's not been significant. Ms. Myers, anything you would add to that?
No, I think most of the questions were received by Drew's department online.
Yeah. So Mr. Palmer is our Director of Student Information Systems, and I think most of the calls came into you, and dozen or so fewer?
Less than 20, correct.
And then in addition to that, my understanding is that you and the IT department feels pretty confident that moving forward with Illuminate is a good decision.
Yeah, when we get to the next item, I will recommend that we continue the contract with Illuminate or we renew the contract with Illuminate Ed for next school year. I think as we've talked about it, they're probably one of the safest vendors out there now because because of this data breach, they've had to take a lot of, put a lot of action in place to to ensure that something like this does not happen again. So we do have, we do have a level of confidence with them, and and quite frankly, we have invested significantly in in training and building of reports. And as you all know, this is not uncommon for for data to to be leaked or data to be found from many different sources. Many of us have received a letter indicating that that our data was shared or or was released at some point as a part of a data breach. So our, you know, our job on this end is to continue to do everything we do to keep the data safe. And then and Illuminate Ed has provided us with significant assurances going forward around the protection of the data.
Thank you.
Ms. Mueller?
So you kind of already answered some of my questions, but one of the big questions I had is, while I in no means want to, you know, downplay the significance of this event, to what degree was this particular information considered highly vulnerable for identity theft or any of the things that might be a concern of parents?
So that's a great question, Ms. Mueller. And I think as far as any kind of a violation or data breach would go, this is probably the best kind to have. We do not maintain any social security numbers on students or families. We don't, we don't collect them, we don't have them in our database anywhere. Parent information was not included in this breach. So what what you're finding is what is called directly directory information that was was leaked out, and it's typically information you would, you know, you could find on the internet.
And then I have a follow-up question, and I don't know if this is for you, and you spoke briefly onto it, but I wanted to put it out there for Mr. Palmer as well. Noticing in the letter from Illuminate, they have installed a bunch of additional safety measures, including multi-factor authentication and things like that. Is is the IT team generally satisfied that the new protocols they're putting in place will, you know, prevent this kind of breach from happening again?
Well, I think they're the best people to respond to that, either Drew from, Mr. Palmer from the information systems side of the house, or or Mr. Check, or Mr. Does he, Scott? Scott? Scott Tissinger, thank you. I'm sorry. So I don't know which of the three of you would like to respond to that, but I think any of the three of you, thank you.
Yes, Andrew Palmer, Director of Student Information Services. So yeah, I had requested of Illuminate Ed, their tech team, to give me a breakdown of what changes have happened, as well as exactly what their synopsis was of how this occurred. And so they sent me four or five-page document of all the things that they've now put in place that they didn't have before when the breach occurred. And so I feel confident that they have kind of state-of-the-art, you know, top-of-the-line security now, a lot of it because of what Ms. Pilch said about, you know, once this has happened to you one time, you put in a lot of security so it doesn't happen again. And so I feel confident for my team, and I think I speak for IT, we've met extensively on this, and they don't have any concerns going forward either.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Ms. Mueller?
I don't think any of us want to downplay the seriousness of a data breach. I want to be clear about that, that we take this very seriously. That's why we hired Scott Tissengers to make sure, I mean, he's our cybersecurity engineer. We, you know, we are taking security of information very, very seriously. And so I don't want to downplay that. And having said that, if we're going to have a breach, this is, you know, this is the level of breach that we can tolerate.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Any other questions from board members? Hearing none, we will move on to the next item, which is the Illuminate Education Contract. And this one is an action item that will that will need motion.
I move to approve the continuation of the Illuminate Education Contract for the 2022-2023 school year.
Second.
Thank you both. I know we just had discussion. Dr. Pilch, is there anything else you would add?
No, I, no.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from board members around our cybersecurity or this contract? Hearing none, Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Mueller?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Pappas?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next item of business is a first reading policy, EHAA Cybersecurity Operations. And because this is a first reading, we do not have to take action on this item tonight. We will be taking action on this at the next board meeting, but we want to give this to the public to see and for us to see. Dr. Pilch, is there anything you would say on this first read?
Only to add, Mr. Matthews, that this is a new policy for for District Six. It is a recommended policy. Casby is recommending the policy, and and our security team in the technology department is also recommending this policy.
Any questions, comments from board members on the first read of this policy? Dr. Pilch, I just had one. Would this change significantly what we're already doing with cybersecurity, this policy? Or does this just put in policy what what we are currently doing for cybersecurity?
I think I'll invite either Mr. Check or Mr. Tissinger up to respond to that. I, my understanding is this codifies much of what we're already doing, but I'd love to give our software, our cybersecurity engineer, an opportunity to respond to that.
Thank you, I'm Scott Tissinger. I'm the cybersecurity engineer, recently hired last July.
Whose name I can't pronounce tonight.
It's not the easiest to read necessarily. In answer to your question, there are things I would say that we haven't completely done. It's a work in progress. Any firm, private sector, or public organization would, you know, you don't ever finish this type of work. So there will be new things happening, but in fact, we're trying to be more transparent and more visible in terms of the standards we're following, sort of national standards that anyone could look up, could access, could understand better, vendors we work with, the public, and so on. So this formalizes that, but it, you know, it's not really a major change in direction or anything like that.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Any other questions, comments from board members? Well, hearing none, we will move on to our next item of business. And this is the revision to policy JLCD, administering medication to students. And this one is an action item that needs a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evan School District Six approves the revisions to policy JLCD, administering medication to students as presented.
Second. Thank you both. Before we open this up, again, for board member discussion or comment, Dr. Pilch, is there anything you would like to say about this policy change?
Thank you, President Matthews. This is a revision that would would allow us to have staff who are trained to use stock epinephrine auto injectors in emergency situations or the use of opioid antagonists in emergency situations at our school sites.
Any questions or comments from board members on this one? Mr. Bentley?
Yeah, I just wanted to just to say that this is what we talked about in the executive session, right? The, I think this is a great idea. I fully support them. Like Pepper said, I'm kind of surprised that we already don't, but it kind of goes, sounds like to me and my limited medical knowledge, but it's in the in the realm of a defibrillator and life-saving, you know, aid. So easy to apply and hardly any, if any, side effects or cons, you know, in the equation. So I'm glad that this was brought up and we're moving forward with it.
Thank you, Mr. Bentley. Any other questions or comments from board members? Ms. Mash?
I'd just like to say that I agree with Director Bentley, and I have had had some training in some of these medications and also feel like they are very necessary frontline opportunities to potentially have a good outcome as opposed to a negative one. So I, I thank you for bringing this forward.
Thank you, Ms. Mash. Any other comments, questions? I'm not seeing any. I would just add, I also am very, very thankful that you're bringing this to us and appreciate that we're likening it to being able to provide CPR if we have a child, student that is, or anyone else in our building that is in need, that we would be able to to offer medical attention. So very much appreciate it, and we'll be voting for this. Oh, Ms. Mueller?
I did want to just say thank you to the various entities, organizations, whoever it was, that that kind of gave us guidance that this might be the right thing to do, and just appreciate their care for our community.
Thank you, Ms. Mueller. Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Mueller?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Pappas?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Our next item of business is the CTE Center Update. And for this update, Dr. Pilch, I will let you lead off, and I see some people approaching the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. We have Mr. Ken Hinson, Assistant Superintendent of Support Services, and Ms. Jenny Schilling, who is Director of Current Technical Education, here to share with you a pretty exciting update on our new Current Technical Education Center. You heard Mrs. Haley speak at the beginning of the meeting that the Success Foundation has chosen to invest in this as their fundraising camp, their next fundraising campaign, and we're excited to show you what it is actually that we're all going to be investing in with our bond dollars, our mill levy override dollars, and dollars from the community from Success Foundation. Mr. Hinson?
Okay, thank you. Excuse me. The CTE Center kind of, our idea with this kind of arose because we needed some adequate space. At Jefferson High School, they have a construction program that is really taught out of an old choir room with no ventilation. So when you walk in there, there's sawdust from, you know, here to there, really not adequate to run a CTE program like that. Also, Jefferson High School is in a former elementary school. Since 2010, we've had high school students in that elementary school. So we we began to think about where could we have spaces that would support the CTE programming within that that building? And so you'll hear more about that here in a couple of minutes. Also, within the district, at the same time, we had Fred Charter's School of Innovation. Lease was, I will say, up at the end of June. And we also had a lease change with our preschool program out at Ames College. So our, we really needed to look for sites for all of these programs because some of them needed to be relocated for space. So this is a piece of property that we had purchased, I don't know, about three years ago on Second Street and Fourteenth Avenue. It's the old CDOT site. We are waiting right now for a demolition permit from the City of Greeley. What you see there that looks like orange pants is actually somewhat the outline of the new building. So you can see, we'll be renovating there where you see the 1420. We'll be renovating that old garage area to house actually three CTE programs, and then we'll be doing addition on the site with other renovations to add Jefferson High School onto the site. And this is just a quick diagram of the Career Center. At the top of your picture there in gray, that is the garage that will be renovated and that will house the construction program, the welding program, and cosmetology program. And then the part at the bottom of the page that's kind of web-shaped is the Childhood Center there in gray. So there's three preschool classrooms there, and then part of the CTE programming will also be the childcare program, teaching those kids how to go into childcare with those buildings. And then also, there will be a technology lab on that floor that will also support CTE. And then this is the second floor of the new build, and that basically supports Jefferson High School. I know you can't read that, but you get the idea with the shape. Those are classrooms. And so again, back to needing adequate space. With this project, it's about 52,000 square feet of new space and renovated space. Our construction budget is $22 million. We are using bond proceeds, which was approved by the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee that I meet with at least quarterly. And really, the support on this was for CTE. This allowed us to to really not only give Jefferson High School a adult-sized building because they're in an elementary school, but also gave us the space to really upgrade their CTE programming. And so you can see the new homes for the, at the bottom, what we'll do when Jefferson High School moves out of their current space, we'll backfill that with Jefferson Junior High School, the preschool program, Childfind program, who's losing their lease, the auditory program, and SWAC. And so with the career and college readiness being a major focus of the bond, this project fits right in with that. And every school has funding allocation for career and college readiness. And this will allow Jefferson High School, students at Jefferson High School, and other students in the district, with this being a CTE center, to be able to take advantage of these career pathways. And and so that's a benefit, that's a real benefit really to the district. And so Jenny, we'll explain some of the programming.
Thank you, Mr. Hinson. It is my pleasure to share with you the five pathways to be offered in the District Six Career Technical Education Center. Each of the five pathways offer D6 students the opportunity to learn skills in a high-demand field, earn industry certificates, and take classes for both high school and college credit. With the convenience of the Jefferson High School Daycare Center, high student interest, and projected high employment growth over the next 10 years, the Early Childhood Education Program will be offered. This pathway will allow students to earn credit towards an associate's degree, enter the workforce in a preschool setting, and/or continue down the education path to a four-year degree. The construction pathway is one that is currently offered at Jefferson High School and will move to the CTE Center. Students will continue to have the opportunity to participate in the PTEC or Pathway in Technology Early College High School Program, earning their high school diploma and associate's degree, with a shift in the focus from construction management to electrical. Cosmetology is a high-interest area based on the student survey provided at the beginning of this school year. Students also identify cosmetology as a career choice in our Career Explore Internship Survey, and there are limited opportunities for formal training in this area. This pathway will start with hairstyling and move into the other areas of cosmetology as the program grows. Information technology will be offered with a focus on cybersecurity. This pathway is one of the top 10 This pathway is one of the top 10 high-demand, low-supply industries in our state with high earning potential. Welding is the fifth pathway that will be offered in the D6 Career and Technical Education Center. This pathway also has high student interest, with students being waitlisted to participate in Career Academy programming offered through Ames Community College. This pathway provides many career opportunities in our region and expands into other pathways such as agriculture, automotive, construction, manufacturing, and oil and gas. There are two CTE programs that complement each other that will continue to be offered at Jefferson High School: Business Marketing and Alternative Cooperative Education, or ACE. Over the course of this year, students have participated in business and ACE classes where they have designed, marketed, and manufactured coffee mugs while learning the aspects of a strong business plan. The ACE program is a multi-occupational pathway where students have the opportunity to discover their career interests, create resumes, and earn credit for work-based learning opportunities. I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, thank you, Jenny. So the Jefferson High School portion of this site is really a school that is 200 to 250 students. So it's a smaller high school attached to this large programming. And I know the pictures that I showed you before were pictures, okay, that you can tell that it's a school. But I'm going to show you, attempt here, to show you a fly-through. There's no music with this. You'll just hear my description. So this is the D6 Career and Technical Education Center, mostly focusing on the Career and Technical Education Center, a little less on Jefferson High School in this video. So here you can see the location, if you haven't been out, on Second Street and Fourteenth Avenue. Prime parking for the rodeo. This is looking from the east onto the campus. And so the building there closest to you is the Jefferson Senior High School. And as we enter the parking lot, looking to the north, you can see the courtyard there, outdoor learning space with the childcare playground there on the right. And then as we continue to move forward to the north, on the left, that brick building is the building that is going to be under renovation. And so here, walking, you can see Jefferson High School students maybe out at lunch. You're looking into their cafeteria there. And then as we enter this entrance into the CTE center, and as we go through this door, here you will see the welding center and metals shop. So we're working with Jenny to make sure that we have the right kind of equipment in there for certification. And then as we move back out in the hallway, and now we're heading to the south, we'll go back through the vestibule. And there's a classroom there that we just walked by for Career and Technical Education. And now we're in the woodshop. And notice, as with Greeley West, we have access to the outdoors. So kids have a pad where large projects can be worked on outside or inside. A lot of flexibility of movement there. And as we're back out in the vestibule, now we're walking north, and we're into the cosmetology area. So our hope and plan is, is that when we're in the appropriate spot, our kids are licensed enough that you'll be able to go in there and register for a haircut, or I call them haircuts, or a style. Something like that. Now we're back into the cafeteria here of the Jefferson High School. And we're going to work our way down the, to the technology room. So we talked about cybersecurity. Mr. Tissinger's face, he was smiling when we were talking about that. But here's an example of that classroom, technology lab. And then back out into the cafeteria, and now we're going to walk down the main hall. Any minute now, we're walking down the main hall. This is back toward the front entrance, so we're walking south. General classrooms will be on your left. And then as we get to the right, will be our daycare classrooms. So these are the classrooms. Could have gone in the first one, but I guess we're going to go in the last, last one. So this is one of our daycare classrooms. Okay, so that is a brief tour, mostly of the CTE side of this complex. We're very eager for this to get started. First, we have to do demolition, and we're just waiting for that permit that should come here in the next week or two. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Henson, and Mrs. Schilling.
Yeah, thank you both. We're going to have several questions, it looks like, for you. I don't know exactly who was first, but maybe Ms. Sullivan.
That was impressive. That was really cool, the walkthrough. So you said the enrollment right now is at 200 and what?
They're, they typically are between 200 and 250 students at Jefferson High School.
I'm sorry. So what does the capacity of this school allow to? Because I can see right now, there's going to be a lot of gravitation to these fields.
Well, the Jefferson High School, if you remember, is one of our alternative high schools. And so that will probably remain about the same. All, not, all their kids may not be in the CTE program, but a lot of them do take advantage of at least one program within that school. And that will leave us room to bring students in from across the district to enter those programs.
So can a student stay at their home school for their core classes and just go to Jefferson for the CTE program?
They wouldn't be considered a Jefferson High School student at that point. They would be considered duly enrolled with at Career and Technical Ed and their home high school.
So that is a lot then? Okay.
So really, we're looking at this as like two parts. So there's the Jefferson High School part, which has been a successful graduation recovery school, you know, that we need in our district. And then the CTE portion of it is somewhat separate, but a lot of the Jefferson kids will take advantage of that. But we would want to fill those programs with students from across the district. So there may be kids that come in to enter those programs, but it's also open for kids at Jefferson High School. And the kids that go to Jefferson High School come in at various times, come in and leave at various times during their career. So they're somewhat of a fluid population at times.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Mr. Norwood?
Ms. Schilling, is this the ACE that I know and love from a few years ago where the students can get a partial credit for the class and a partial credit for work as well?
Yes, Mr. Norwood, it is.
What can I do to help?
Well, the ACE program will remain with Jefferson. It'll be the CTE classes that they continue to offer, that they currently offer. So ACE and Business and Marketing will be on the Jefferson High School side.
I'm so glad to see this comeback. That is just a fantastic thing. Thank you.
Ms. Mueller?
So I, this is really to the Jefferson students. One of my favorite visits this year was to Jefferson High School. I think that's where I got this. And it's my favorite. And I wanted to tell the students who were very, very compelling in their leadership of our visit and very much made the case they needed more space, that more space is coming. And the other thing is, to the community, I don't know if everyone knows this, but Jefferson has, as I remember, a partnership with Habitat for Humanity. Is this correct? I thought so. And I'm really appreciative of that partnership in the community as well. So I guess the biggest question that I might have missed, and I'm sorry, Mr. Henson, if you said it, is when do we think Jeff, this, the CTE and Jefferson site will be finished and completed and ready for students?
August 2023.
Okay, thank you. And then the other question I have, which I just want to be cognizant of the other school nearby, is sort of any concerning impacts to Billy Martinez? Is that the right school next to it?
Yeah, no, no, Billy Martinez is next door. We own all that property, Billy North back there. We're doing an addition right now at Martinez. My only concern right now is we keep all the construction traffic going the right way. But there should not be a problem with that, the way these properties lay out right now. In the future, we will have opportunities here to do further demolition and look at other site improvements in the middle of that. But right now, we're pretty much going to keep our boundaries between the property lines set.
Thank you.
Mr. Bentley?
Yeah, I just wanted to say how exciting this is, especially after seeing the 3D rendition. I've, I have a lot of experience traveling past Jefferson and watching them build sheds on the front lawn. You know, that's kind of inappropriate almost, but this is going to seem, this is going to be such an asset to our community, you know, as a private employer looking for labor, trade labors and welders and people of this nature, that this is extremely needed and going to be a place that the Jefferson kids who are in an alternative program, so to speak, you know, who might have had their priorities skewed, or some life, life stuff out of their control, or whatnot, a place to really have pride. They're not just thrown in an old elementary school anymore. This is a, it's going to be a focal point. They should be able to walk through that school and have a lot of pride that they're actually in it and hopefully just start their pathway to a better life.
Yeah, we actually, during the design process, involved students and teachers in the DAG, Design Advisory Groups. So it was, it was pretty cool to hear the input from the students, what they wanted in the school. Hopefully, we hit a lot of those targets.
Only other question I had is Lincoln or Miller?
Say?
Lincoln or Miller? What weld machines did you purchase?
Oh, yeah.
So we'll have 14 Lincoln and three Miller.
It's like shipping four to me.
Is that the right answer?
Ms. Pappas?
I don't really have anything different to say other than this is so exciting, and I thank you both for your work. Jenny, this is really exciting. You brought this from the onset, so I really appreciate you and all you do. But we can't understate enough how important this is going to be for our kids. Just the opportunity for them to walk out of there with the training in fields that they might be interested in. So just, we can't understate how important this is for our kids. Thank you.
Good pain.
Any other questions? I'm not seeing any, guys. I would just say, again, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Pilch, for bringing this to us. I want to, I remember how this began to take, take shape and want to thank the city of Greeley for giving us the option on this property and allowing us to purchase this property. I remember when we purchased it, we didn't know what we were going to do with it exactly. Or maybe you knew what we were going to do with it, but, but we didn't know what we were going to do with it. And to see, see what it's becoming, I want to thank the voters of Greeley and Evans. This is, this is our bond money, and we didn't have this on the bond. But because we got favorable bond pricing, we were able to do this. And I had a, I had a friend, he works with, Habitat works with a lot of our Jefferson students, and he expressed exactly what Mr. Bentley just expressed, that in so many districts, you know, kids in the alternative programs get the leftovers. And they get, you know, the hand-me-downs. And in this district, to build a new school for, for this, for this high school is just fantastic. So thank you all, and thank you to our community for making this happen.
Yeah, I'd like to also thank the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee for, you know, seeing the work that we've done. We've done, we've done a good job budgeting on projects, and we have a lot of projects going on. So their ability to see the importance of this project, to allow us to use bond proceeds to do it, again, with career pathways leading the way, is much appreciated.
Because that is all we have for tonight. Thank you for joining us. This meeting is adjourned.